To the public, which stands one nation under God in the mistletoe with liberty and justice for all.
So I can ask her, let's see, first off, I want to introduce Abel Gil Lockett. Hope I said your name right. She's the new student rep. She's at our meet tonight. And there's your name tag. I'd like to know, we have a public session here now. The pledge of allegiance, approval of minutes on in public and non-public. A motion for anybody?
I'll make a motion to accept public minutes for public and non-public minutes.
Second?
I'll second it.
Any corrections?
I didn't see anything.
Everybody good with that? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Expansion is five to one, five zero one.
Who escaped?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. See, I was looking at Tim's not here and.
So it's five.
Yes, five, five zero.
Thank you.
Yep. I'll get there once I get rid of this computer situation. Public comment? Nobody public comment? So we're going to move on to. Continuing the, continuing business. Student rep, you might as well.
There's a presentation on the agenda.
Sorry, I'm moving too fast, I know. Presentation and three oh six rules?
Yes, April Guinness is here to do a presentation on the new updated N three oh six rules, also sometimes referred to as the minimum standards. Go ahead, April.
Thanks. So as I mentioned around the N three oh sixes, it's a set of state rules that define the minimum standards that every public school has to meet in the state of New Hampshire. It covers everything from school buildings to curricula to staffing and graduation requirements. So I focused on a couple of what's news and then I focused the whole presentation on the graduation requirements. So they changed the term courses. That language has now been replaced with learning opportunities. The class size ratios have been updated, so they removed the maximum cap and replaced it with a student educator ratio. For K to two, that's 25 students or fewer per educator. And that's provided that each school should strive to achieve a class size of 20 students or fewer per educator. In grades three through eight, the number of students is 30, but they want you to strive for 25 or fewer. And then high school, it is 30 students or fewer per educator. There are some extensions on that or extenuating circumstances like study halls, vandor, forests, and other like large group instructional courses or learning opportunities can exceed that ratio. And then they said for safety reasons, if you're a CTE or a science class, it's going to be based on the number of workstations and the design of the area that you're teaching in. So those numbers will vary. And then again, they made changes to the graduation requirements and that starts in the, with the freshman class of 2026, 27, when they enter school. So this year's eighth grade, when they enter, has new graduation requirements. So I thought it would be helpful to show you the state requirements that we currently have. They require 20 credits in arts education, digital literacy, English, math, physical science, biological sciences. And then there's what looks like two, they have two credits of social studies, health education, physical education, and they have six open electives currently for the students that are in high school now. That is the state requirement. What we currently have for a graduation requirement is 23 credits. And so four in English language arts, four in math, three sciences. We include the physical science and the biological science, but we also require a science elective. In social studies, we require three credits. Health, the state requires half a credit. We require a full credit. And then we have our arts education and the digital literacy, we call computer education, and six open electives. So that's what we currently have in place for the students that are in high school math. So with the incoming class of 2026, 2027 school year, the state is still going to 20 credits. However, they have changed some of the pieces and I'll do a side by side in a few slides for you. They've reduced English to three and a half credits and half a credit has to be in writing. Math is at three credits and that includes algebraic concepts and at least a half a credit in statistics or data analysis. And then what they've really done is broken up U.S. history into its own half credits. You know, history, there's a logic and rhetoric requirement now. Civics, the constitution and government of both U.S. and New Hampshire. Economics, financial literacy, world history, global studies, or geography, and then health, physical education, and then they dropped it to four open electives. So what we're sort of proposing would be, we would keep arts education at a half credit, digital literacy half credit, English, we would keep at four credits. And a half credit of that would be in writing. Math, we've got three credits. We dropped the science elective. And then we keep all of the required social studies credits. And then that allows us to have open electives back at six. So the next slide does do the side by side comparison for you, which is a little bit easier to see. So what we've done is we have dropped the four credits in math down to three credits. That allows us a little bit more flexibility. It allows us, like we did with the science elective, to drop that. That allows the kids to have six elective credit. That doesn't mean that they don't have to play, right? They can still take a science class, they can still take an extra math class, but it's no longer required. Some of the things that we currently have, like economics, including personal finance, we have as a one credit. It's now broken out into economics and financial literacy. The state does allow for some flexibility with courses as long as they need the competencies for each of those to get credit. So we could embed logic and rhetoric. It doesn't have to be a standalone course or these are just required subjects. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Question?
Yes?
So which credits are you planning to embed?
So I, we haven't got there yet. So it's in a later slide that I'll be working with the social studies department here at the high school to go over the competencies and the new required subjects and the credit to figure out which ones we are going to embed. But I pulled out the social studies just so you could see that currently it's three credits and it's moving up to five credits, beginning with the freshmen. So again, these are just required subjects and the credits, not necessarily their own courses. And so I thought it would be important to talk about how many credits our students actually graduate with. So the class of 2023 was the last class to graduate with the requirement of 22 credits. And you can see that we had a 98.63% graduation rate and our students are getting well above the minimum. And then in the class of 2024, this is the first class that had the new graduation requirements that we had put in place of 23 credits. And again, you can see they're well above the requirements. And then the most recent class of 2025, again, most students are well above the minimum requirements that we set. And I thought it would be important to kind of look at what our other local schools are doing. And it looks like Hanover and Lebanon just require 20 credits to graduate. So we're already going above and beyond the state and other local high schools as well. And then my next steps will be, I'll be meeting with the guidance department because we need to work on a tracking tool. The first year should be okay because we have Stephanie Cooney, the ninth grade school counselor, and she'll be able to help track. But then it's moving forward once they leave freshman year and they get split up between the two other school counselors, how are we going to keep track of that? I'll be meeting with the curriculum coordinators and with Tina Fleming to go through audit tools to make sure that we are meeting all of the competencies. I'll be working with the social studies department about the new credits and an implementation plan. The English department to figure out where we are going to have that half credit of writing. And then with the math department to make sure we've got that half credit of statistics or data analysis. So that's sort of where we're going.
Do you have any questions?
Anybody through the board?
No, I stopped this presentation once already, so I'm pretty clear on it.
Okay.
Thank you for doing it.
Yeah.
Why are you increasing the social studies so much in the?
That's a state, the state has made that requirement.
When they were taking feedback to the three oh sixes, there wasn't a lot of feedback from educators.
Correct.
So there was, so that's one of the reasons why is that this is more not necessarily educator feedback in order to change these criteria. It's actually making things a little bit more complicated. So because now we have to figure out where you can put these classes and have them be offered. So that was my, that's the reasoning for my question is because where, how are you going to balance a rhetoric course without having a standalone course? How are you going to find a teacher to do that, to teach that course? So that's, that's the conundrum that districts are facing with these new three oh sixes.
And the social studies department has been great. They started asking me in the spring last year, what's going on with the three oh sixes? Does that mean we're going to have to try to find another person? And so they are ready to go. We're just going to get that through their MIAZ visit and then we're going to start hammering out the three oh sixes and the competencies and where things fall.
April, are you working with other curriculum directors on alignment and collaboration?
Yes. So the Southwest Curriculum Directors Group meets monthly and we are talking about doing sort of local competencies because we have a lot of kids that move between districts here in the upper valley and well, all over the state, but that would be helpful. So we are working on talking together, figure out who's doing what and how we can all kind of work together. So it's not so completely different if kids transfer schools.
Thank you. No public comments, so nobody here to make. Makes things easy. All right, we're going to continue in business, which I jumped too quickly on. Student representative, please.
At the high school for sports, volleyball on the 16th, varsity won 2-0 away at Franklin. On the 17th, university won 2-1 away at Franklin. On the 20th, we hosted Sonoma and varsity won 3-0 and JV won 2-0. For our girl soccer, on the 18th, we traveled White Mountain and lost 3-1 unfortunately. On the 20th, we hosted Newfoundland and won 5-0. And yesterday, the 22nd, we hosted Stevens and not aware of the score right there. Boys soccer, on the 18th, we hosted White Mountain, varsity won 2-2 and JV lost 3-1. On the 20th, we hosted Newfoundland, varsity won 1-0 and JV won 1-0. For cross country, on the 13th, they doubled Portsmouth Christian. Carl Russell placed second and Isabella Curry placed 10th for the 5K. And on the 19th, for our homecoming meet, we hosted Fall Mountain and Hinsdale. Carl Russell placed first, Carson Rogers placed second, Alex Desarona placed third, and Isabella Curry placed first for girls. For field hockey, on the 15th, we hosted Winesquon, varsity won 7-1. On the 17th, we hosted, we hosted Fall Mountain and JV won 6-2. On the 20th, we hosted Newfoundland, varsity won 3-0. And yesterday, the 22nd, we hosted Newfoundland, no, hosted White Mountain. Football, on the 20th, we hosted Newfoundland and they won 32 to 6. For the arts department, the music is currently working on their fall concert. And art, they had a field trip to the Art Foundation, I think September 25th. I believe it just got canceled today. For clubs, salt made vaping awareness posters that are hung around the school. For national arts society, new students are currently in the process of applying and I think the notification should come out in two days. For art club, they sold tattoos and face painting on Friday for homecoming. Writers Guild, they've begun discussing the next literary magazines have set in abeying for October 24. For student mission robotics, preseason meetings have started. For interact, we had about 30 new members sign up at the club fair and they ran a food drive for homecoming, during homecoming for Minnesota Tacklesum. For theater is working on their fall play grade expectations. And they have a field trip for workshop at Plymouth State University on October 17. For origami for smiles has had 10 new members join and is starting their first meeting and service project. Math team has not yet started. For destination imagination, both teams have their meetings and a fundraiser to recognize those as well. Other news related to the school, last week was dress up week in preparation for homecoming. The homecoming dance was held this past Saturday and student band horse shipments played along with books covered.
Cool.
For other schools, IRS has begun positive phone call Fridays for each week staff members. At IRS, they're on the lookout for positive behaviors from students. When they see these happening, they fill out an online form nominating the student for the positive phone call home, which is then turned into a certificate. Every Friday, each student gets nominated and called up to the office where a phone call is made, commenting the student for their positive contribution to IRS community. And a photo is taken of each of the students and posted on a call board outside the front office. For CDS, they added to their pathway rock garden to welcome people into school. They have an accessory bubble in OTPT room for students who need a break or are dysregulated. They also collect a food between pantry and homecoming week. And they're starting finding her stride on the 15th and 100 students have signed up. And for EVS, they enjoyed the high school athletes greeting them in the morning last week for homecoming. October 1st, all students from EVS, Canada River and Ford will be traveling to the high school to enjoy presentations from Brooklyn State University Tigers called Conquest. And on October 2nd, EVS will have their open house.
Great report. I have it all. Anybody got any questions, sir? No? Great report. Thank you very much.
Abby or Abigail?
Abigail?
Abby.
Abby? Okay, I'll get that figured. Next on, generate co-curricular activities report on the packet. Who's, who's got that?
So. Yeah, I read the, of course, just the words by accident. Sure. So we met on the 11th, Thursday. I am the only person there from the board. It was Amanda, Brian Limerow, Rick Lampman, Steve Stebbins, Todd Thompson, and Danielle Thompson. We got an update from Steve on sports as far as signups, how many kids we have for each sport participating, that kind of thing. We got our, we got an update from Rick as well. And got a lot of kids playing sports, doing a lot of co-curricular activities. There's a lot, there's a lot of activities out there for kids to do that. I feel like the origami club is a new one that's pretty cool. So there's a lot of kids with a lot of interest out there. Looks like we're going to be revamping the outing club, which I think has not been around for quite a while. And we also got some updates from Todd, who is the rec director for the town of Enfield. He heavily coordinates basically all the fields in Enfield that the younger kids utilize and a lot of their sports as well. Kind of looking at what we have coming up for kids in sports with big numbers. Volleyball continues to put out huge numbers. Seems like, like, uh, sorry, field hockey seems to be falling off a little bit. Soccer seems really big as far as boys and girls go. So a lot of stuff there. Danielle for RAB gave an update on their fundraising efforts and they pay for so much and they, they just really do a lot worth not a lot. And it's, it was really, it's so impressive to hear Danielle talk about all the things they do to support all of the kids and make sure that they all feel seen and recognized and, you know, it's, they don't, I frankly told her they don't charge enough for various memberships and things like that. We did, I did say, ask, toss out the idea of, you know, could we sell banner space on the fences during baseball season, just like soft banners to help fund a lot of these? Because they, you know, they fund playoff tickets and a lot of stuff for a lot of kids. So it was a very long conversation, but it was good and I think it, I think it yielded a lot of hopeful fundraising opportunities to continue to support all these kids because those funds do not flow freely. So that was pretty much the gist of it. We got the reports here on how many kids are playing each sport and that kind of stuff.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question. The banners that you referred to, those were the advertising banners?
They could be, yeah. You could, you know, like say, you know, the co-op wants to buy a banner on the outfield and you charge, I mean, like all the other schools around do it. You know, you charge 200 bucks, right? And then for the season and they roll it up and you can keep it for next year? Or, you know, if you don't want to sponsor again next year? But yeah, it would be for like those, the green fences that they take up and put down every year.
I think we've had a conversation in the past, probably more than a couple of years ago on that. And maybe it's an item that we could put on the agenda to discuss as a board?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's definitely worth it and, you know, because we, there are some big things that need to be funded and how do we help, you know, fund those things, but also continue to support the athletes? And, you know, obviously there'd be parameters around that kind of thing. Like it's, it's supporting local businesses, not Coke, not Pepsi. You know, like it's local businesses, the, you know, the landscaping kid who just graduated last year and has got his own business, like those kinds of things where it's a, it's a community support, but it's also supporting the kids. So yeah, I mean, I think it's definitely worth having another discussion on to see if there's concerns around it.
Maybe get the information exactly what is needed from the board for, to support this and get it off the, you know, kick it off so that we can solicit to the area businesses.
Yeah, I think that from my understanding, Danielle was like, I just need the okay from the board. So I think it really just has to be a discussion from us to make sure that there aren't concerns, to give them the green light, to then go ahead and solicit people.
Check the policy?
Yeah. Because we do, I know we, we talked about it in regards to over the summer when, I think it's like Bay Ruth or whatever was playing down there, they wanted to hang up some, some signs on the backstop. And we kind of went back and forth about what, what that looked like in the policy and that kind of thing. So I think it's worth definitely revisiting.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thanks on the report is Budget Committee and representative for that is on our board is Tim. He's not here tonight.
You want me to talk about it? Because I went there.
Oh, yeah, I'm just getting there.
Okay.
I'm just getting there. I'm slow doing this, like a finance facility meeting. I usually go 20 minutes in the finance facility. Yeah, you go ahead.
So we had our first budget committee meeting. And really it was just a, essentially a scheduling meeting. So talked about the closing for 24 and 25. Michelle talked about how we were a little bit less on what we were returning to the districts. Is that correct? When it came to our final numbers.
Well, returned to the town.
Yeah, returned to the town.
It's, it's a little less.
Yeah, a little less than what we had planned, but. And really the big thing to keep in mind for the budget was really that we have 40 students less in within district. Is that correct?
Forty approximately, according to first day enrollment numbers, which will change depending on the October first enrollment numbers.
And talking about the upcoming teacher negotiations as well, having been added cost. And we discussed CIP and the importance of keeping projects in the CIP so that we can keep the budget in. Next meeting is in, I want to say it's the second of October, something like that.
Uh, wait, October 6th.
October 6th. Where we'll hear from SAU and?
CES and EVS.
CES and EVS.
You got all that camera? You can hear that, right?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, I'm just checking because everybody's got different voice volumes.
Nobody ever tells me that I'm quiet.
No, I'm just, I'm not worried about mine usually at all. Okay. No further questions. Go on to EIC report, which is in your packet. And who's the member on that?
Diana and I both.
Okay. Whichever, whichever one, whoever wants to speak on it.
I mean, I could speak on it. We, we were exactly the presentation that April just gave. Kind of talked about more of the process that she went through in more depth. You know, and how we're stacking against other districts. I mean, honestly, the primary, you all just saw basically what our, what our meeting was here as far as.
Okay.
All of that goes, there was discussion about valedictory versus salutatory, but that's not something we're currently ready to move forward. It was tabled again. I think we do have a policy that is, did we have a policy that we sent through for tonight or?
Um, there, yeah, there's a couple of policies.
Yeah. Yeah, there were two policies that we sent through. You'll see later, so. Really, that was, the crux of the meeting was that for us.
Okay. All right. All right, fine, that's good. Next is Superintendent Report. I'm Amy Esbo.
Yep, you do have my written report in your packet. So you will see the first item there is that on Wednesday, September 17th, the Governor and Council Committee approved a request for the S R three late liquidation funds. And Michelle, what do you know about that today?
It's in the bank as of this morning.
Yeah.
Don't get too excited. Michelle will have some other news for you when she gets a report that we just found out today, but I want to put the board aware, make the board aware of. So thank you also to Thomas Opel for he submitted an L S, or is submitting an L S R for reciprocity between the bus driving licenses for a New Hampshire certified bus driver and Vermont certified bus driver to maybe help with, you know, the driver shortage that everyone apparently is experiencing. As Michelle and I were at a conference today in Concord, it was the Finance and Operations Conference. And same issues, I sat in on the presentation from the bus driving people today. I forget what it was, it's been a long day. And, you know, they're seeing shortages, they're seeing difficulty in getting people certified. So we're going to think about doing things here a couple of different ways to hopefully start to combat some of our issues, but no quick fix in sight. And just finally, the district, we still need a couple of coaches. I believe you have an assistant football coach for the middle school coming before you today for approval in non-public, but I think we still need a wrestling coach at the middle school level. But I'm appreciative of the public that is stepping up to help those kids. So thank you, and we always like a good substitute or bus driver.
Questions for Superintendent? If none, thank you very much for your report. Next is the visitor report. From Michelle.
So you have my, my report as well in the packet. You'll also have tonight the bid request for the oil, propane, wood pellets, and copper paper. I also have the facilities capital reserve transfer request for the EVS late roof, which was completed last month. So I just need to send a letter in to get the money out of the capital reserves. The budget meeting started this week with the schools. We met with EVS and CES yesterday to start those. We're going to meet a total of three times with each principal. And then we'll involve the special ed director and we'll involve April, Craig, and facility supervisors, Dan and Matt, as appropriate. And as I said, we attended the conference today. I think it was a very good conference. I enjoyed my sessions that I attended. And last but not least, which is not in my letter, as we returned back to the SAU today, there was an email from School Care. I'm just going to summarize their, their email here or just read as much as I can of it. It says, as we communicated at the 2024 annual meeting, the claims and pharmacy costs have far exceeded projections. Today, they have managed this imbalance by tapping into their reserves. But as of June 30th of this year, the reserves are strictly low, leaving them with a projected deficit of 4.5 million. Without corrective action, the stability of the economy is at risk. Their action plan to restore this is.
Their, uh, action plan to restore this is, um, to, what does it say? Restore to an appropriate level, the action will restore reserves to an appropriate level of 20% of member contributions. And for this group, this assessment will roughly equal one and one half months of contributions. So on October 1st, this year, we're going to receive a notice of assessment, including the amount assessed to the district. The amount will be due upon receipt. I don't know exactly the amount, but based on what our claim, a month, month and a half is, is roughly around 500,000 for us. But we will learn the exact amount on October 1st.
Wow.
What, what's that catch all to? I'm sorry.
School care, um, has a deficit right now. In order to make up that deficit, they're charging everybody a month and a half's worth of contributions due October 1st.
Okay.
Which is in the neighborhood of 500,000 dollars.
Just a one time, one time.
One time. Instead of increasing premiums, this is their, premiums will still increase, but this is their.
How mu, how much of a notice did you get?
I got today.
Today.
So this is being sent out in eight days.
On, yeah.
The bill is being sent out eight days for roughly half a million dollars. That's due on receipt.
Due on receipt. Insurance company, we have your own repair office.
Where are we supposed to get this money? Because our budget was raised and appropriated last year, not now. So, um, any advice from our legal counsel maybe?
We haven't even discussed this with legal yet. We will, we plan on discussing it with legal. Um, we need to figure out if there's a portion of this that the teachers then, uh, pay for, right? Because we're not sure, we're not really sure where this is. The good news is we got our 400,000 back from the S R three late liquidation, which means we don't have to tap into that 650,000 dollars that we've reserved, um, with the warrant article, right?
Okay.
It's a, oh, the, um.
Reserve what we, what we retain.
Retained.
Yeah.
Yeah, retained is the word. So we do have that, so.
So how much was it that we had retained?
We retained 650.
Okay.
Um, with the idea that we may not potentially get that 400,000 back from the S R three funds. So that we have to pay for that. So luckily right now, we are there. And so, you know, this hardship now of the half a million dollars that it looks like we're going to old school care, we will be able to tap into that to be able to, to, we'll tap into the 650 to be able to pay that out. It's very, very discouraging news.
And going forward, it's not like we can find another insurance company.
I think at this point, we are probably going to have to start to look at health trusts. Um, when we start to prepare the budget, Michelle and I talked today, we are going to estimate for a 20% increase in the healthcare. Usually we guess, Michelle estimates us at 10, and that's been the tradition for the years that I have been here. We can set 10, it comes in at like 6. This year we guessed at 10, it came in at 13. Um, I am extremely concerned. I've heard superintendents talk about health trusts going up 18 or 19% in, you know, their premiums in a year. So I think we're going to be very, very conservative and go at 20% and hope that our increase comes in well under that and not over. Because it's just, it's, the health insurance is just outrageous right now.
So we had, we, you have to deal with this during, uh, contract talks with the, with the teachers.
Correct.
Coming up. So that's going to be a, a point that you're going to have to deal with on, on that, correct?
Correct.
As I know in the past, you've had to deal when they, they've paid so much and we paid so much percentages.
Yep.
So, okay. Any other, anybody else, any questions?
I just, I, I just wonder if they're going to charge those of us who are on School Care 65 plus, whether we're going to get an increase now.
Uh, and this was such a blind side to us, we had no idea.
You think so? Have you checked your mail today? I checked my mail today and didn't get.
So are you going to check with legal?
Yep, we're going to check with legal. We'll have more information at the next board meeting.
I'm going to have to cancel it at this point. I mean, it's not like 300 and something dollars. This is why going forward, our teachers, our faculty, they're technically state employees. And no individual school district or school system should be hit with this kind of a financial burden. And, and at the end of our, like fiscal year, we can't do it. We can't get the money from anywhere else. It's not like we're a company. And I've always said that New Hampshire needs to treat all their state employees the same so that they all have the same health insurance. They all have the same retirement benefits. It's all equal across, across the board so that if a mask coma teacher wants to go and work in handiwork, it's the same benefit package, it's the same equal playing field, no matter where you go in New Hampshire. We just need for people to understand that school districts don't have extra money laying around. And we can't do this.
Right now, we're lucky with the money we have right now, so, yeah. Okay, uh, well, can't wait to hear what everybody has to say.
Thank you.
That was, that's, okay. Good meeting for this, huh? Any updates on the bus routes?
Uh, yes, we do have a bus route update, um, not as far as any changes go. But I do have, um, a message from Sierra. The board had asked that I, um, reach out to Butler's about their buses not pulling over when there were X amount of cars behind them. Um, and this is, this is the response. Uh, drivers pull over when, pull over the bus whenever possible to allow traffic to pass when it is safe to do so. The rule is as follows. The bus driver shall reduce speed and pull off the road where safe to do so, giving opportunity for other vehicles to pass so that the line not, uh, so that a line of not more than five vehicles shall accumulate to the rear of the bus. Vehicles passing the bus must be able to do so without crossing the center line of the road. So that's, that's another, um, issue. So that really means the bus has to tuck off far enough so that there's adequate, um, room for cars to stay in their lane. Um, she said, so that, that's the RSA that she pulled that from. And she said that oftentimes when bus drivers pull over, uh, the towns do complain that they are damaging the shoulder of the roadway. So that does make it an issue too. So, um, that is the information I have. So I think that's the key part. I'm not sure on Lock Haven if there's a spot where they can really get the bus fully off the road to allow cars to pass. So she is looking into it and that is the information I have.
Any questions? I, I stand corrected what I, what I talked about in the last board meeting, cause I talked to the bus driver and, and he's, he's one in M9, which I was asking about. And he, he explained to me, which clarified my concerns on the last board meeting. So he's, he's, he lives in town and, uh, he's, he told me exactly what he does and where he goes and how his route goes. And I was, I was excited about it. I actually, I actually stopped and saw him the next morning before he left. So I'm good with that. And the, the only thing with this pulling over thing is, the main thing is they're not on psychos we're looking at. I think Tim's looking at 118, I'm looking at Route 4, which is where, for the bus issues are when they're backed up. So, and there's no reason why on the straightaway before you can get to, to the fire station or anything like that, a straightaway or anywhere, that they got 20 cars behind it and they could have pulled over anywhere along there. So I've seen that and I think the same thing on 118, but.
Yes, like last year and the year before.
What's that?
They pulled into our road. And so every time they did that, cars behind them could pass on 118, but now they stop on 118. So all the cars behind them don't pass.
Yeah, there's one on Shaker Hill that, cause that's a state road too. And there's a stop that's at a road they could pull into, but I mean, I counted 20 cars on Shaker Hill alone. So it's.
I can see them concerns about the town roads saying something, but these are on the highways. I mean, these are on, you know, Route 4, 118, uh, 4A. You know, these are, these are regular, you know, state roads, so.
Laura, what's your road?
What's that?
I'll just add, I'll ask Sierra if she can pull.
Province Road.
What?
Province Road.
Province Road.
Yeah. But I think it's the same for all the kids that live off of 118 that they used to pull off on these small little dirt roads and now they don't.
Okay, I, I'll ask Sierra about that.
Okay.
At least fixes the 118 problem.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, so we're going to have approval for the MS 25 and the DOE 25 approval. That's going to, you've got that, right?
It's going around. Did you finish signing it?
Yeah, when we get to it, okay.
Joe and Booster haven't signed it.
Yeah, I've signed it.
When we get to it.
Oh, that was your signature, Joe?
No, I have not.
No, it hasn't gone over this way, so we're fine, we'll get to that. Do I need, I don't need a vote of approval on this?
Oh, we do need it.
We do. I'll make a motion to approve the MS 25 and the DOE 25.
All right, in second, who's second?
I'll second it.
Diane, Diane? Any discussion? You don't get in there. Of course.
Sorry.
I, I just, I, you know, I don't get, I don't get to do it straight up. Only done it a few times. Any discussion on this? None? All right, hold all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold all's? All right, that's it. Six, six zero.
For signature.
Yeah. So next is, uh, the bids. I like to go, uh, one at a time if everybody's agreeable. I like to go with the propane one, start with. Have a, want to have your motion on the floor to, to, to go over this?
I'll make a motion to discuss the propane bids.
Okay, in second? Hold on a second, okay. So you see, you see that it's on here and, uh, there's only one bid and it's from, uh, Urban Energy for a price of 14,070 dollars. And it's all 34 gallon.
So do you know how much, um, of an increase that is from last year? Just basically, percentage wise?
I think it's like six cents more, I can look.
Like per gallon, it's six cents higher?
I think it's six cents higher.
Yeah, that's, that's reasonable compared to last year, yeah. So, did you have a contract with Irving last year?
Yeah, we did, we did the contract with Irving for both, both propane and, and oil.
Yeah, it ended up being that way.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Which, that's, that's the only bid we have for the oil too.
Yeah, I know, I know. And then last year we had more than that. Can I get a motion to accept this?
I make motion to accept Urban Energy's bid for 14,070 dollars for propane?
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold all's? Nobody, any of us? The next is, uh, the pro, uh, for the, yeah. Sorry, I wear my glasses here, I'm not pointing from my. Next is for the propane. I just did the propane, sorry. The next one is for the oil right here, the oil bid. I said the wrong thing, didn't I? I said the propane one. Yeah, it's all good, okay. So I have a motion for that, for the fuel oil?
I'll make a motion to approve the fuel oil bids.
Okay. Who is it for?
We haven't said who it's going to be for.
Oh, you said approve.
So. The only one on here, so approve the Irving Energy bid for the price, total price of 26,218.50.
And second invite for Tom. Any discussion?
Why is there lots bidding on these?
No idea.
Twice to all of these companies.
I think last year we had, we had more than, more than this on these two bids on both of them.
I didn't even get a like, no, we don't want a bid, nothing.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Besides simple opportunities.
Because I think previously we used to get more than one bid and, and we dealt with the same company for both of them because they gave us a better rate. But we had more, we had bids on at least on one of them, on either one. So I don't, maybe it's because everything's too volatile right, right now. So they don't know what's going to lie for the prices. They're not trying to, very big, so they, they can do this.
So last year the propane was 1.26, so eight cents. And the heating oil was 2.433.
Okay.
So same as usual, 2.433.
Okay. No further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any comments?
Do these bids need to be accepted with a deadline of what, today?
I'll leave them until I get a lot of them.
Thank you.
Next is the pellet bids and.
So you need a motion to accept the bid from Lime Green Heat for? Is?
There's no bid for any of them.
Well, the, you've got a total price of 100,500 in your set. Does that belong on the Lime Green Heat line?
Who's, who's?
It does.
Who's, who's got the bid?
Yes, yes, sorry. There's the, that's for Lime Green.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know, I know. I'm going to say thing.
Yeah, the 335 per ton.
It's above here, we're all looking at this.
So.
Yeah, it's Lime Green.
In second.
Yes, I'm, I get to that, I was just checking. Just one second. Thanks Kathleen, I'm getting there. Appreciate it. All right, any discussion on this?
I see that it's not in the digital packet.
Yeah, I was going to say.
You see, it's, it's confusing because it shows three new bids and then you got the numbers of, uh, that's why we're, we're looking at this.
Was Lime our supplier previously?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're the only ones.
Yeah. Okay. No discussion? I think it is, is it? Go for the Lime Green Heat, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Just to put it in perspective, we use mostly our pellet furnaces to heat buildings, right? The other two are basically backups, the propane and the oil.
Yes. Yeah. When it's super cold, they sometimes have to use the, the oil burner to, to, uh, fire up everything. Cause the pellet stove is really like, you know, it's really cold in the wintertime, they have to use the oil to fire it up even more.
Thank you Kathleen, that's very helpful.
So.
Makes us that way when you see the whole house.
I got those are great prices for that. I'm like, oh, nevermind. I blew your hair back a little.
Next one, the, the next one is the bid for the paper.
How did this stack up against last year? I remember last year, it was like, that was like mind blowing. Is this pretty in line with what last year's pricing was? Yeah.
So for WB Mason, they held their prices from last year, that's the exact same price.
That's nice.
Last year, and we use the same in other cases.
Perfect.
So can I, can I have a motion for, for the, can I have a motion for the bid for the paper company?
Make a motion to discuss, uh, paper bids for WB Mason.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Oh, discussion?
My discussion is that we accept the bid from WB Mason because, um, number one, it's a little less money. And number two, that we've already entered into contracts in the past with them.
Yeah, and maybe they treated us well by holding our pricing. So I think that shows goodwill on our part not to just like jump around.
Also, I will say that WB Mason, from a educator standpoint, is fantastic. Like their service is awesome. So we have a copier that's down or something, they're there the next day or, you know, we really, it's, put an order in, once it's approved, it's probably on the truck within a few days. Like, they, they have a well-oiled machine.
Oh, they do, yeah.
Any further discussion on this? Okay. So if we have a bit, we have, we have a motion on the floor for, to accept this?
I have a motion to discuss.
There was a motion to discuss.
Excuse me?
There was only a motion to discuss.
Okay, all right, I'm just checking with you. They get my recorder back. A motion, anybody make a motion on, on a bid?
I will, I make a motion that we accept. I will, I make a motion that we accept WB Mason's bid for copier paper at 36.62 per case or $20,145. Second.
Second, Kathleen seconds. No further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? So next is, uh. Yeah, I'm going, I'm going, I got, I got, I got my C and I dog here tonight, so I gotta get my glasses, so. Facilities capital reserve transfer request, the slate group approval. Have a motion to accept that? Anybody? For $55,500?
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of $55,500 for the renovation of the EBS Slate Room from the facility capital reserve fund.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dawn. Any discussion? If not, alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous. Next is approval of Mascoma Outing Club, continuing packet, I believe. Who can discuss, who can talk on this?
I make a motion to discuss Mascoma Outing Club.
Okay, second, anybody second?
I'll second.
Okay. So.
What is the Mascoma Outing Club?
So the Mascoma Outing Club is an extension of the Olay program that we do at the Indian River School run by Dartmouth students. So it's an outdoor adventure club. So the kids get a basis there and then they move on to the high school. And there really hasn't been for a few years, a club where kids who want to go mountain biking or hiking or do a polar plunge or any of those, hike cardigan, do any of those outdoorsy adventures that they would like to do. So this club had been run years ago by Kobe Van Bees with great success. It was a very robust club. Kids were excited to join and be part of it. And so it has had a resurgence. So you are seeing now some students who are very interested in getting this club started. And Mr. Sweetland, as the student council head, has approved it. And you do have some kids ready to go. Very exciting. Mrs. Stark, if you look at the very final page, she serves as the advisor for this. And you have 10 kids who are ready to get started.
So this, if this gets approval, which gets approval, they can, they can step right off, correct?
Yep.
Any other questions?
I think it's great, I mean, a lot of these sports are the things that people do around here a lot and it's great to get the kids knowledgeable and comfortable and send them outside and that's awesome.
And you said this is already going on as middle school?
Yeah, they use a program called Olay.
Okay.
That's how the, they did that building out back there a long time ago, when Kobe was here doing that. Outback of the schools, so. All right. So we've got a motion on the floor, correct?
Just to discuss.
Discuss, so I have a motion on the floor for, so I have a motion to accept this.
Sure. Got a motion to approve it.
Second.
Kathleen seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, it's unanimous. And next on agenda is escalation emergency certification approval. And that's from the Department of Ed, I believe, is right?
So I do need the board to approve this list of teachers that we have hired. We have two ways, so if a person comes to us fully certified, that's an easy way to hire. You approve them as a hire. We have another program where if there is a shortage in our area, not a shortage listed by the Department of Ed, that we can declare a local critical shortage, which we have done. You all have got two of those for us. We've declared local critical shortage for elementary ed teachers, for one of our librarians, et cetera. So you have done that twice for us so far, so we've approved those, sent those on. So those potential, or those teachers can seek an alternative pathway to certification. Right now, what you're seeing is an emergency authorization to employ these people. So you're seeing one, two, three, four. You're seeing a fifth grade teacher. This is only good for one year. When you do the local critical shortage and we put them on an alternative plan, that's a three-year plan for them to get it done. This is a one-year plan. So the candidates here range from someone who has a PhD and just needs to maybe take a course or two, doesn't need the three years in order to fulfill her certification requirements. A person that just needs to take a test maybe to become certified, so they don't need the three years. It does allow them, April will correct me if I'm wrong, but to bypass, I think, the $500 fee that is associated with becoming certified through an alternative plan, that is an incredibly high, you know, just to be on a plan to get certified is a $500 cost to some of our teachers. So some of these people will be able to, you know, get a certification without necessarily having to pay that 500 extra dollars. They'll still pay for the certification process, but it would allow them to bypass the fee to become on an alternative plan. So I'm asking that the board tonight approves these candidates so that we can send this official letter into the Department of Ed.
I'll make a motion to approve the emergency authorization. Emergency certification authorization, right?
Sure, we'll take it.
Okay.
Second.
Second, second by Dawn. Any discuss, any further discussion? If not, alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? I would ask the next upon the, on the policies, who would like to read these second reading ones? Because I'm not into reading myself from my eyesight, so clearly else. Kathleen, do I can do this?
Sure.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to approve policy IHBH, uh, ELO second reading. Policy IHVI, alternative learning programs and individual second reading. Policy IK, earning of high school credit and achievement of competencies. And policy IKF, high school graduation requirements. And policy IKFG, career exploration. Readiness pathways and credentialing second reading. And policy IKB, homework all for second reading.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Wood, second?
Sure.
Okay. Any, any changes in this?
Uh, no, the one changes, the, the one change that we did do was change guidance to school in front of counselors. So we did make that change in one of the policies. And April did a much better job than I did last week of explaining to you what the work was, that was done at EIC as we did those side-by-side comparisons of the old state requirements according to the 306s and the new state requirements according to the 306s and how we best thought that Masoma would fit into that. And still allowing that flexibility, the committee found that it was very powerful that we allow our kids still six, and feel free to jump in committee, six electives, right? At the choice of the child, so, or student. So that if you were really into arts and you wanted to take six art electives, you could, right? If you wanted to take more science, if you were on a college track, you could use those electives to take a course at Dartmouth or something like that. So we felt that was pretty important. April had a great point. April has a long background as a high school math teacher. She had a great point, so from that perspective, when we dropped that math credit down, that was a really robust conversation that we had. April's point was kids that are going to college are gonna take four credits in math.
Correct.
It's the kids that struggle in math that may fail a math course, then, then have to double up.
I think also for the math point too, is that you have to sometimes have three years in order for those kids to make that algebra requirement. Like you need to be able to be remedial in that aspect where kids will, and then even then, you may need that fourth year in order for them to get across the board for that. Because we are one of these states that we can't modify. So all kids have to cross the algebra bridge essentially in order to graduate. So being able to have, you're right, like some kids will take four years of math and they'll like crank through it, but it may take some kids three years just to get to that algebra requirement.
You're right. So the credits that April put up, the new, so for the 2026 freshman that you saw, that would be when the change takes place. So those are the recommendations that we went through with EIC and what is proposed and reflected in this policy.
Everybody all set? More motions for the second readings, their approval. Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, all unanimous. Next is, agenda for the next meeting, committee reports, October 1st, enrollments, SP2 timeline. I do know that Tim sent out a email, finance facility will be, meet will be moved, moved to following, following week. Won't be on the same date that originally was, it'll be following week. Um, because of, we just can't, everybody can't beat that. Public comment? I wasn't missing on April, but I thought maybe everybody got out of, out of math practice because they didn't want to be dealing with you as a math teacher. But that's, that's only, only joke I had about the whole thing. But you were good at math teaching anyway, so. I think it was because everybody didn't want to deal with you. So no public comments. And next we have one agenda is personnel resignations and nominations. Green sheet, everybody has.
I don't have a green sheet.
Well, you're gonna get one because.
There's a stamp pile here.
It's coming around. You wanna get one? You get one?
I don't have one.
Can you have the rest?
You don't get a backup?
Well, I use mine digitally.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
I'm happy to share. There's two green sheets.
So we've got two, two green sheets and not double sided, that's fine. And the first one is September 23rd nominations. Everybody, everybody got it? And so staff resignations, retirements, the two that resigned on here. And. Now the second one, on the Indian River School co-curricular nominations. See the renewals, there's one new person, new person on the student council advisor. Any questions on that? We can discuss this if we need to, all right?
Yeah.
So. Any discussion on any of this?
Was it not on hire this year?
What's that?
It could be, remember please that Martha is out of the office and has been for the past couple of weeks. So we're doing our best. So you might see a double up there that we asked IRS to send us a li, oh, are you talking about the resignations?
Yeah.
Yes, that is correct too.
Okay, cause I thought we had voted.
Yes. One is, is another resignation. And like I said, the, the list of the co-curricular nominations for advisors on that second page is, there could be a double up. You might have already seen one of those people hired as a new person, most of them are returning. But that's where we are for that.
Yeah. Okay. We'll vote on that afterwards, go down through everything else when we come back around again. So we do have, do we have non-public? We do?
You don't want to vote on these now?
What's that?
You usually vote on these, now you don't want to do these now?
I, well, we've done it in the past afterwards, but we can, I can do either one. We can vote on it now.
We always do green sheets first.
We'll do, we'll vote on it now then.
Okay, and then we do the yellow sheet that we talked about and non-publically do that after.
Okay, I know that. I realize that. Sometimes it's a ball. Okay. So have a motion on the floor.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignations and nominations for as presented.
Not second?
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Have a nominate, have a, have a nomination for the Indian River School co-curricular one?
I'll make a motion to accept the Indian River co-curricular nominations as presented.
I'll second.
Kathleen seconds? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. So we do have non-public, I have a motion to go in non-public.
Make a motion to go into non-public?
Uh, for the purposes of hiring and for the safety of our emergency operations plan.
Second.
So they, they missed, I'm gonna, we'll call.
You want my name?
Yes.
Laura.
Laura. No, I, I can see, but I haven't.
You have to say yes.
You have to say yes.
Yeah. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. That way?
Yes.
Yes.